I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll have a seat in the City Clerk and call roll, please.
Dr. Ramona Becker.
Here.
Guy McDonald. Betty Martin.
Here.
Peggy O'Donnell.
Here.
Diane Nguyen.
Here.
We've got a forum, Mayor.
Wonderful, thank you. With all of our meetings, we'll begin with a moment of silent prayer. You'll join me. Amen. Now if you'll please rise and join me in the saying of the pledge allegiance to our American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First name before council this evening is the consent agenda, which consists simply of our minutes from our last city council meeting, which was held on August 1st.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same side. Next is appropriations ordinance seventeen dash sixteen. Appropriations for this meeting total six hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty-four cents. I do want to point out that two hundred and fifty-one thousand of that went for various capital improvement projects. That was over there at the courtyards at Elk Creek, Rock Springs Phase Five, and Rock Spring Second. And just let everybody know, these are reimbursed by a special assessment. Fifty-three thousand dollars was for Thirty-seventh Street. That was for the rail crossing improvements. And a partial payment of fifty-five hundred dollars was made on our 2016 audit, which is nearing completion. So, and another big one was fifty-one thousand, three hundred was our annual payment on the big water tower repainting and maintenance. And then, of course, we had the thirty-six thousand dollars, thirty-six eight for the sewer main cleaning. So if there's any questions or other comments about the appropriations ordinance?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve appropriations ordinance seventeen sixteen. Second.
First and second. Any more questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And for city requested appearances, this year we had two resignations from our planning commission. I would like to recognize Gordon Jones and Carla for their many years of dedication and service to the city by being a planning commission member. So if the two of you would join me at the podium up here. We're going to go down here, I'm sorry.
Gotcha.
You guys are too fast. Alrighty, well, I just want to thank you for all of your service on the planning commission from April 2006 to June 2017, eleven years.
Yeah.
So I hope you'll hang this plaque and think of us fondly as we do and as we thank you for all of your service.
Thank you so much.
Wonderful, alrighty. And Mr. Gordon Jones, anybody not know Gordon, raise your hand. Gordon, this guy knows more about planning. You don't choke that there, buddy, but. Knows a lot, and so we sure are going to miss you as well. We thank you for all of your service over ten years as well on the planning commission.
Thank you.
So we also have a plaque in appreciation for all of your service.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. And I do want to point out that you received an email and, right, it was not an oversight, but what I absolutely get, we did have another member of one of our volunteer committees who resigned fairly recently after a long length of service, and we'll certainly get her recognized in the next couple of months, so for that. Thank you for all of your service, you two. Okay. Next, move into our public hearing. State statutes require that a public hearing be held before the issuance of any IRB. That stands for Industrial Revenue Bond. The city is considering issuing an IRB. This is for the construction of Epic Sports in the Sunflower Commerce Park over there in the second addition. You guys might see all the big stuff over there. And a public hearing allows property owners and concerned citizens the ability to speak on the proposed IRB. I see Kevin is here from Gilmore and Bell to answer any questions or any explanation we need.
I don't know that I need to add any explanation. I will point out that the resolution of intent on this project was adopted a year ago, and I think the reason for that was to move relatively quickly and allow the company to get their sales tax project exemption application submitted. And so the next step really is just to have this hearing, and the hearing's necessary before you can issue the bonds and also grant the incentives such as a property tax abatement. So again, just kind of the next step.
So I will hereby open the public meet, the public hearing, and ask if there's anyone in the audience interested in speaking on the IRB to come to the podium at this time. You going once? You going twice?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. At this point, we'll put it up to citizens concerned. If there's anyone wishing to speak to council about anything on the agenda this evening, they can come forward at this time. With that, we will move to reports, and we'll start with Dr. Ramona Becker.
I don't have much to report tonight, Mr. Mayor. All I can say is I'm very sorry I had to miss the hot dogs party this week while I was out of town. That's always a lot of fun, and so sorry I wasn't there. I wish I would have been. And I'm also sorry I'm going to miss the league meeting. I have a cousins reunion. This is only the second one we've ever had, and have a lot of cousins coming in from all over the country, so I won't be able to attend that meeting either, which I really hate to miss, especially when it's here in Wichita. We should be there, but I unfortunately won't be able to. So that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a formal report, but I just want to remind the public that school starts this weekend next. I know junior high tomorrow at sunrise, and then Thursday, the high school, and I believe USD 259 starts next Wednesday. So I think all the traffic things, I'm not sure about resurrection. Is it Thursday?
I think Thursday, half day.
I do, too, so. Thank you, Mayor.
I have no report.
Mrs. Martin?
Well, I guess I attended the hot dog pool party. I never saw so many big dogs in all my life, but they all did good, and they had best dressed and bad breath, and I don't know what else they had for prizes, but they did have one for bad breath. I'm surprised.
I wouldn't have wanted to be the judge for that one.
And he did have bad breath. But anyway, it was a lot of fun, and there were a lot of people there, and two of the committee members, I saw two of the committee members, and Tristan and the lady that helps her, Jean, Jenny, Jenny, they did a wonderful job. And the mayor and the chief were there, so that's all I have.
Appreciate it. And I'll say at the, at the hot dogs pool party, it was neat, the weather, I don't think we've ever had better weather than we had yesterday evening, and yeah, Mr. Lacher was there with his wife helping out, and as you mentioned yet, Jenny and Tristan were there, and Brian from our rec department was also there for a while. So I certainly want to thank all of our staff, and I know if I'm missing any of them, I apologize, but I know that there's at least four members that I spoke to from the Community Development Committee, so we'll thank, and that was Joe and Danielle and Jeff and Jeff, at least, and so if there's anyone else I apologize for missing, but do thank all of our volunteers and all of our staff who were there.
Dr. Barrow. And his staff.
Yes, oh, absolutely, Hartland, who sponsors and really helps out with that. Just, it was just a fun event, and just, I'm glad that so many people were able to be there. I noticed this year, we actually had spectators sitting out on the lawn.
Really?
Like as if it were a show.
On the berms.
And that, yeah, on the berms, yeah, thank you. It was, it was, it was exciting just to see all that.
I think they had popcorn, but they didn't offer some.
It's all nice night out, and then, of course, a lot of people using the playground and seeing the new surface afterwards, so.
It's also being copycat-ed by other cities around, too.
Yeah.
Which is neat to see.
Sure is, yeah. I'm just, I can't believe we're closing the pool this early, but school's starting, is it starting a lot earlier this year than?
No.
No?
It isn't, but it sure does seem like it.
It just, the older we get, the faster it is.
That's what's happening, and okay.
That's what they say.
With that, we'll move down to city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a formal report. I've been working on the bylaws, specifically with UAC. They didn't have anything, so we kind of took the template from your feedback during the workshop and started there, met today, and I think we're pretty close to being able to have something to present to council when they come visit next month. Also have been tracking the Sedgwick County tax foreclosure sales. There's one this month. We don't have any properties on it. I do anticipate that we will have some properties at the next sale, which will be sometime in the spring, so I'll keep you posted on that. And of course, the state legislature is out of session, so nothing from there.
Thank you. Mr. Lacher?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want, I misspoke at our last workshop. We were talking about followers on social media, and so Tristan gave me some actual numbers. We have over a thousand followers on Twitter. We have over a thousand followers on Facebook, and we've got about a hundred and fifty on Instagram, which is our newest social media we're getting involved in, so. But what's amazing is, you know, all the tweets and stuff that were going out yesterday at the pool party and up to the pool party, when you do that, you get more and more people following. So it's kind of because it shows us, you know, who follows us, and sure enough, when those tweets and everybody starts retweeting them or whatever on Facebook and such, then more people start following you. So we gain people every week, and so, but we've, we've still got a ways to go, but it was nice to see we had that many. I was pretty happy about that.
Do you want to talk about a certain selfie on Instagram that I saw earlier today?
Yes. And, yeah, and Tristan told me the council's supposed to take a selfie tonight, too, so.
I took one on the way back from LA today, but there was no, I didn't pay the eight dollars for internet on the plane.
Yep.
So I'm going to send that in tonight.
Yep, it's, it's like City Hall selfie day, and so all cities, people, staff and stuff are taking selfies, and so we'll see if we can get one a little bit later and tweet it out. And then the other thing is that council will recognize, because it's on the agenda, but maybe our staff doesn't know, I mean, our citizens don't know, but the latest census numbers that came out have Bel Air at a population of seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-one. And so you'll see on the agenda tonight that you now have three representatives on the league, or the league voting delegates, because when you reach seventy-five hundred or more, then you get three, and then, of course, I don't remember what the next change was that you got additional, but, so that's why you now have three instead of two, like you've done in the past. And the other thing is, then, that now makes us the fourth largest city in Sedgwick County, so we have obviously Wichita, Derby, Hayesville, and then Bel Air's number four. So we surpassed Park City and Valley Center. So pretty, pretty exciting that, obviously, with a hundred new homes a year, there's families moving in there, and it's counting towards our population, so. So that was all I had, Mayor.
Taking my selfie instead of that. Do that. Alrighty. With that, we're going to move into ordinances, resolutions, and final actions. The, let's see, and the first one is a consideration of a, let's see, a resolution determining the advisability of making certain internal improvements, so let me, let me see here, and whenever the, this actually is going to be A through C, but we'll need separate motions for each one, for each resolution, but I just let everybody know that whenever the city is petitioned to install public infrastructure in a development, such improvements are financed through a temp note, and ultimately, then that goes to a GO bond. So the financing process requires a resolution be approved authorizing the said improvements that I just mentioned. And since there were revised petitions for water, sanitary sewer, and paving for the courtyards at Elk Creek, council needs to approve the revised resolution, I know we did the original ones, but this is the revised ones, amending the original resolutions, like I just said, and I see Mr. Countess still here, so if you need to add anything or ask any questions, I would certainly send them your way for this.
I would add that what is being amended here are really just the parcels to be assessed. The projects haven't changed, the paving, the sewer, the water, the estimated costs haven't changed. The original petitions and resolutions listed forty-three lots or parcels to be assessed, and I think, and city manager can add to this if I misspeak, but I think the developers and builders found that there were a handful of lots that they needed to enlarge a little bit to make them more attractive and more buildable, so they sort of did a lot line shift without a replat, and what you end up with are four lots that are slightly bigger parcels than they once were, and instead of having a fractional assessment of one forty-third over forty-three lots, you have one forty-second over forty-two parcels. And that, that's really all this does, and we amend and restate and reference back to the original resolutions, but again, same estimated cost and same project description, really just changing the method of assessment a little bit, and the parcels to be assessed.
Like I said, we will need individual motions for A through C here.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
So none of this has to go back through the planning commission?
No, please.
No. This is the financing of it, so.
Well, I mean, changing the lots. Changing the lots.
Right, the, the lots have not changed. The parcels to be assessed have changed slightly. So if you owned Lot Forty, it now may be Lot Forty plus ten feet of the next lot, and then the other lot may have, you know, the remainder of that lot plus thirty feet of the next lot, and so it, to simplify it a little bit, if there were five lots, or five parcels that were going to be built on before, as an example, there are now four, but not a replat, it's just simply you now have a lot plus a little sliver of another lot, and somebody has a lot and a sliver of another lot to expand what they're building.
So there's no easements in between these four lots?
Yeah, Anne, do you want to come up? And we're going to bring Anne Stevens, our city engineer, who can come up here. Kevin can't get out of fast enough, huh?
This actually has gone before the planning commission. What they did, there was some easements in the, in these lots that they took a few feet off of one and added it to another lot. Jason Gish with MKEC was here probably two months ago, presenting some easement, some easement vacation, and that's what this is about. This is just the financing side of that easement vacation in the courtyards at Elk Creek. So yes, it has gone through planning commission, and it actually did come before the city council and they approved it. It was just, the timing is a little different.
Right, but we don't need to do an additional visit with that.
Correct.
Any other questions?
Good question. Who wants to start us off?
Okay, I'll, I'll take a stab at it. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution determining the advisability of making of certain internal improvements in the city of Bel Air, making certain findings with respect thereto and authorize and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such finding. Is this the right one?
Yeah.
Yep.
Paving, paving improvements, courtyards at Elk Creek Edition Phase Three, and amending, restating, and repealing Resolution Number R-16-36, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, any questions or comments on item A? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. We'll move along with B and C here.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution determining the advisability of the making of certain internal improvements in the city of Bel Air, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such finding. Sanitary sewer improvements, courtyards at Elk Creek Edition Phase Three, and amending, restating, and repealing Resolution Number R-16-35, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I would like to make a motion to accept a resolution determining the advisability of the making of certain internal improvements in the city of Bel Air, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such finding. Water distribution system improvements for the courtyards at Elk Creek Edition Phase Three, and amending, restating, and repealing Resolution R-16-34, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, any questions or comments on item C? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Next, we're going to take a little change of course here. We're going to talk about the proposed budget. Item D here, the governing body, we spent the last four months working and discussing the proposed 2018 budget, and we got started about a month earlier this year, and I just want to thank Ted and again for your staff for doing, working on that, reminding everybody that this budget includes four hundred thousand dollars for street improvements, capital equipment purchases, and maintaining current services with no mill increase. Once again, we're able to maintain that. If you read the Ark Valley News, you'll see we're not the, you know, that's not happening in a lot of cities right around us, and I'm very proud that, that we as a group up here were able to make that priority of no mill increase. So we have heard the public hearings, we've held the public hearings, excuse me, with no comments made, so wanted to see if there were any additional questions before adoption.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I make a motion to adopt the city of Bel Air 2018 budget as published and authorize the mayor to sign, the governing body to sign. Second.
First and second, any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Take a couple ones off before we start working on extras.
Ted can breathe a sigh of relief.
All right, let's move on to item E. Still, we're going to go back to the courtyards at Elk Creek. When projects are under construction, things do come up that weren't planned for, and we've talked about that a few times up here with different projects. In this case, filter was placed over certain lots in Phase Three of the courtyards at Elk Creek. So city code requires that, requires that the ground be compacted at ninety-five percent density before house construction can begin. The developers requesting that Kansas paving complete the work at a cost of eleven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars. The extra cost is going to come out of the project balance and is spread as special assessments, so again, no cost here to the city. And Anne is still here, Anne Stevens, our city engineer, is here to answer any additional questions, if we have any on that. Okay. If not, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the change order with Kansas paving in the amount of eleven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and one cent, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have a change order on Rock Springs Phase Two. This is another instance where the project under construction is requiring additional work. In this case, it's an outfall channel that's needed for the detention pond, which has been agreed to by the engineer, developer, and the staff, all three. The developer is requesting that Kansas paving complete the work at a cost of three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty cents. This extra cost, like with the previous one, is going to come out of the project balance and spread as special assessments. Any questions on that?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the change order with Kansas paving in the amount of three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty cents, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item G, talking Public Works. We maintain, we have a large tractor that is used for mowing ditches and open areas. The tractor had a turbo failure, unfortunately, causing the engine to pretty much be just blown, right? Staff feels that the tractor has another ten years or more left, however, in its useful life, so the recommendation is that we repair this engine. And two costs were received as options. One is to rebuild the engine, while the second is to do a complete engine replace. Anne Stevens is here with this one as well. Seems like every item we have is for you tonight, but if you want to talk a little more about that, I know there's a little bit of information in our packet as well.
So what we have before you tonight is, as the mayor explained, the turbocharger on the tractor went out as one of our staff was mowing. Immediately stopped the tractor. We got the repair shop called. They came in and looked at it. They said the turbocharger was blown. We replaced the turbocharger. It continued to leak oil. The, they came out and looked at it again, and they said the turbocharger doesn't seem to be working. They replaced it at no cost to us, so we had two turbochargers replaced. When the second one went out, it dumped a bunch of oil into the engine and shot the engine. So unfortunately, we have to replace the engine. There is an option to have the engine rebuilt. That gives us a six-month warranty on that engine. It works, as we're getting to the end of the season, the majority of that time, the tractor would be sitting in the shop, not being used, because it's primarily used to mow. The other option is for the fifteen thousand, which is a remanufactured engine. That remanufactured engine would come in a little bit quicker. It is more expensive, but it would give us a two-year warranty on that new engine. So there is a significant cost difference. Staff really does not have a recommendation that we leave it up to council. You guys can decide the value of that two-year warranty versus the six-month warranty timeline. You know, there's, we're not really going to get that remanufactured one back to give us too much benefit this year. We may get it back for one mowing. It's tough to say. Right now, we do have a subcontractor that is working for us, mowing the exterior ditches. They charged us about thirteen hundred dollars to mow the exterior ditches. That was about half of those ditches. So we used our two X marks, mowing in tandem, kind of one right behind the other, and that works, but the X marks aren't built for that. X marks aren't built for that. It provides a lot more wear and tear on those. So we need to be going out for the subcontractor, and we need to get a decision on the tractor so we can get replaced as, repaired as soon as possible.
And which one will get it back in service quicker?
The 15,000. The re-manufactured.
The re-manufactured one, okay.
Mr. Mayor, Ann, so if we have to pay 13 or $1,400, I can sit here, a time, if we did that twice, we would almost pay for the other engines. So to me, it would make sense so we could get it and have the two-year warranty where it wasn't sitting after that. Then our guys could do that, and you'd have the two-year warranty, because you're going to have to pay to get those ditches mowed, she said.
That makes up the difference.
It makes it up, right.
Four thousand dollar difference.
Right. I think you're going to pay that and get in the ditches mode.
Correct.
Because we could get this pretty quick, you're saying, because they could just pop it in like in a week or so?
They have to order it.
Okay.
But it would take two to three months instead of four to five months. So, I, we may get it back if we go the re-manufactured route. We may get it back for one mowing, maybe two mowings. That's kind of pushing it depending on how long the growing season goes, but we're certainly not going to get it back next week.
Okay.
So, it's really a toss-up. I mean, we may save, we may get it back for one final mowing, but maybe two if we push it, but it's, I can't guarantee.
Remind me again where we're getting, I have it here, why it takes so long?
It's just something that they have to order and ship and get back in.
Okay.
And then the rebuild is something that they, it's my understanding that they would do at the shop.
Okay. Same place here in town though?
Which is a tractor.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm liking the idea of the re-manufactured, even though it's a little bit more, again, if we, yeah, if we get one mowing season and we're down, it's more like a $2,000 difference. And just the idea of, with a two-year warranty versus a six-month, to me, I think there's value in that. And just to let everybody know, at home and in the audience here tonight, a new tractor that's similar to this is going to cost about $63,000. So these tractors generally have a service life. They usually last about, what, 30 years?
Thirty years.
Yeah. So, given the tractor, I mean, it's already 11 years old. It has 1,600 hours where these normally have a $5,000, or 5,000, a 5,000-hour lifespan. So, with this cost, I mean, we're looking at approximately 20 more years, you know, almost, you know, 3,400 more hours. And I thank you for that in the report here so that we have all that information because that, to me, absolutely cements the fact that we need to repair it as opposed to replacing it. So, is there any way that we can get the re-manufactured one through, do you think?
We will ask, but I, there's, we're kind of at their mercy.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Ann, also, does this include the air conditioner repair, shaft leaks, clutch, steering pressure switch, or are those separate items? Because the total on that one is 1,276.
Those were separate items.
Those are separate?
Right. The additional repairs to the air conditioner, et cetera, was 2,997.40. It was on the very last page, second to last page.
What's his steering pressure switch?
What is it?
Steering's pressure switch is 2,997.40.
No.
No, they're all together.
That's for all together.
Oh, all together?
That's for all of those additional repairs. And it's, it's better to get them done while it's in the shop. I'm hoping that that can be done while they're waiting for the engine, and so we don't have to have it out for longer.
Okay, do we have that money?
Yes.
It's in your, in their budget, or we're taking it out?
Ted has confirmed that it's.
This would come out of the equipment reserve fund. We're projected to have around 80,000 in that by the end of the year.
And we have held off looking for a new dump truck that councils told us that we could pursue because of these repairs. It's pretty pricey. So, we will revisit that with Ted to see if there's still funds available for that new dump truck, or we can wait until next year.
Yeah, and the 80,000 was including the dump truck, so there's a lot more obviously if we don't pursue the dump truck in that fund.
So, the motion should read 15,487.33 plus the 2,997.40?
I think it makes sense. You had to get it all done at once.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve a re-manufactured engine at the cost of $15,487.33, and fixing the other items listed for $2,997.40, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Anybody got a coin?
Whatever.
All right. If anybody, first and second, any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Reposed, same sign. Now, we need to talk about electing three voting delegates, delegate, delegates, and two alternates to represent Bel Air at the League of Kansas Municipality meetings. That, what, September 15th, 16th is it?
16 through the 18th.
16, 18th, and it was coming up. And we've heard that Dr. Becker's not able to attend. I actually, when is, when does the voting take place?
Monday.
Monday, okay.
The 18th.
Okay, I should be, yeah, be available for that, but.
But if we, we just go to vote, would we have to pay the full registration fee?
Yep.
Yes.
So do we have, and this can include, it doesn't have to be elected officials up here. This can be our, who all's involved in that, that would include you and Mr. Lasher?
Yeah, anybody that attends, can, yeah.
Because I think Diane and I are going, and Mrs. Kelly's going.
I'm going to try to go, but I don't want to be in case, because I'll know by the 25th. Today's only the 15th, right?
Yeah.
I have 10 days.
I could be there on Monday, but that's the only day I'd be able to be there, and I hate to spend that between registration if I can't go to the rest of it.
So, what I would recommend is, so, we have Mr. Lasher, and, yeah, and council members, Diane Nguyen, Betty Martine, and Jackie. So there's four who can be there. We need three, and then I would ask that one of the four of you be the alternate, and then, and then, yeah, and then between the three of us.
Mr. Mayor?
Any other staff?
Our attorney?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I make a motion to elect Mr. Lasher, Diane Nguyen, and myself as the voting delegates, and Mrs. Kelly, and the mayor as alternates.
I'll second.
Oh, you second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Reposed. Our final item this evening is, we talked about this at a workshop a couple of months ago when we heard the folks from Bannister Real Estate that came in and gave the presentation to us. We have utilized Crown 3 Realty to market the lots out there in Central Park. These are the lots that are owned by the city and the land bank. And council recently felt it would be best to move in a different direction, and we let that contract expire, and had decided that Bannister Real Estate, which is run by a Bel Air resident who has built, built a home right here in Bel Air in the landing, and is excited and wants to see Central Park especially do very well. But have decided Bannister Real Estate would be the firm to move, move us in the right direction in that. So I want to see if there are any questions of staff with that before I ask for a vote. Hearing none, I would certainly entertain a, a motion for item A.
Mr. Motion, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I make a motion to approve residential developer marketing agreement with Bannister Real Estate to become effective August 21st, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Reposed. Wonderful, okay. I'm excited to have him on board, Matt. Don't have any future issues before me this evening that need to be brought up? Anybody has any?
Well, on the calendar, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
On the calendar events, the CCD, CDC meeting is still listed as Tuesday instead of Thursday?
We'll get that changed then, yeah.
Okay. And?
Are they meeting this Thursday, or do you know when they, whenever they?
Yeah.
I know they moved it to Thursdays. I can't remember which Thursday it was, though. Right, right.
I think they said the 3rd.
They said the 3rd.
Was it, okay.
So that would be.
We'll get that changed on the calendar, thank you.
Two days. The 17th.
I had something else, but I can't think of it now.
Well, I would like, before we get out of here, I would like a 10-minute executive session for attorney-client privileged, and invite in the city attorney and city manager. 20? I'm being told we need 20, okay.
20 minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Mayor, do you need to know what the meeting will resume, when it will?
We'll do that. We'll get the motion here. So.
So then?
There a second?
Second.
Wait, we got to see when we resume.
Yeah, we're going to go on 20 minutes. I have 7:40.
8:02?
Yeah, I have 7:41 down there, so we'll be back at 8:01 according to the blue clock. All righty. We are in executive, oh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Reposed. We are in executive session. We're back out at 8:01. Yes, we do, I'm sorry. Yes, we do, I'm sorry.